We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council meeting, our regular voting meeting for tonight, which is Thursday, October the 16th, and 2023. So I'll call this meeting to order. Our invocation will be done by Reverend Brian Berryhill of Heritage Baptist Church, and then our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we come to you again tonight, thankful for another opportunity to open up in prayer, thankful for all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us in this life. And, Lord, we pray for Israel, we pray for our nation, we pray for this community and the city. We lift up our mayor and each City Council member tonight, not only them, but the families they represent, and ask you just to be with them. We pray, Lord, for each and everything that's done here tonight, that we be in the center of your will. And, Lord, you just lead God and direct us, protect us in all things. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
(Inhales) The flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Berryhill, we appreciate the invocation, and we especially thank you for so much, so very many years handling for us the prayer vigil for domestic violence awareness. So thank you for that. I know it's going to be held this Thursday at Heritage Baptist Church, and you all have done that for many years. So we thank you so much for that service. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville's regular voting meeting tonight. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is the City Council regular meeting of agenda items where official action will be taken on the items tonight that was discussed during our legislative work session this previous Thursday night. If the business you are here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item comments from citizens and delegates section for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few rules for the meeting tonight, and we'll get into the meat of our meeting based on the agenda. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair, and if you deviate from this requirement, excuse me, a second deviation will result in a request for you not to continue to speak in the microphone. We'll turn your microphone off. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers or speak from the audience when you are at the podium. When you're at the podium, address all of your concerns and comments to the committed chairperson. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. This is how the following agenda item will be handled. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions based on the information that we received last week. There, if you have any new information, we may ask additional questions before we take the vote on your item. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in opposition, 20 minutes for those that want to approve that item or that are supporting that item. Each person has five minutes to speak. So five minutes for those in favor, five minutes for those in opposition, 20 minutes both sides. Each person has one opportunity. Before you come to the podium, there is a speaker form you should have filled out, and it's outside on the table. We ask that you would please pick that blue card up, put your name and address for the record, and then you hand that card to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, to my right, and you can come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record, and then you are free to speak to us about any business germane to the City of Douglasville. This meeting is not a question and answer format or a debate format. We're just here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions. If we have a question that we can't answer today, we will turn it over to staff, and someone will follow up with you at a later time. Now, those are all the protocol for the meeting, and the committee chairperson will handle each agenda item for their committee. So we are moving now to announcements and presentations. You can follow us on the screen. Above me is electronic version, and/or if you would like a paper copy, there are copies outside on the desk. So we have a presentation from myself to present a proclamation to Ms. Teresa Smith, Executive Director of Share House, declaring this month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Douglasville. I will read the proclamation. Ms. Teresa is making her way already to the podium, and she can give us some words of information and encouragement, whatever you'd like to bring forward to us. And then we would ask that you would come forward and take a photo with representatives, and myself and council members will come around as well to take a photo with you as you receive the proclamation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Pardon me?
I said, "Thank you."
Oh, you're welcome. Office of the Mayor Rochelle Robinson, Douglasville, Georgia. Proclamation and recognition of October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas the City of Douglasville, Georgia, is a community that values the safety, security, and well-being of all of its residents, and whereas each woman, child, and man in America has the right to live free from violence in his or her home, their neighborhood, and community, and whereas it is important for partnerships that have been formed in the City of Douglasville among public spaces, public security, allied professionals, victim services, and private sector to ensure that clients are treated with dignity and respect that they deserve, and whereas Share House has been a beacon of hope for those affected by domestic violence in our community for over 33 years, and whereas Share House has provided invaluable services, including an emergency shelter, crisis intervention, and supportive services to individuals and families affected by domestic violence, and whereas their tireless efforts have not only provided immediate safety for those in need, but have also fostered an environmental, an environment of healing, empowerment, and growth, and whereas October is recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month across the nation. Now therefore, I Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville, and on behalf of the Douglasville City Council, its citizens of Douglasville, do hereby and recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and give immense gratitude and recognition to the Share House for their unwavering commitment to combating domestic violence and supporting survivors in our community, urging all citizens to recognize the significance and the contributions made by the Share House in making our city a safer place to live for everyone. So proclaimed the 16th day of October 2023. Let's give the Share House a hand, and Ms. Teresa.[496.12][496.12](Applause) I see you have company here with you, so if you would like to say something.
Yes, we'd like to introduce Share House Board Chair Kathy Smith-Curry.
Hi, Ms. Kathy. You want to say anything?
(Inaudible) Council, thank you all for having us, and thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate your announcement about the candlelight vigil, and we would be so very honored if you all would attend, and please bring friends and family members as well.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you so much. Yes, and that will be again this Thursday. Is it at 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM at Heritage Baptist Church, right here on Rose Avenue, and they have hosted. How many years has Heritage Baptist hosted?
Oh, probably, I would say now, it is probably about 14 or 15 years.
Yes, ma'am. So they have been very instrumental in hosting that candlelight vigil, and it's a beautiful experience. So I've been in the past, and we look forward to it on this Thursday. Do you want to say anything else, Ms. Teresa?
Again, I would like to thank you, Mayor, and the council for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Yes, ma'am.
This is something that we try to do is to educate our community about domestic violence and make them aware of where services are available to them. During 2022, we received over 2,000 crisis calls.
Wow.
We housed more than 500 individuals in our emergency shelter, plus our hotels, stays as well. We provided over 72,000 services to victims of domestic violence. And so this lets you know that there is still a need in our community. We hate that there is a need, but we're glad that we are here to provide those needed services for the citizens of Douglas County. So again, thank you for supporting Share House, and thank you for recognizing this important month so that we can share information about those that have lost their lives and recognize those who have become survivors as a result of defeating their past and overcoming their fears and becoming survivors from this drastic situation that they generally come from. So again, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Let's give Ms. Teresa a hand, and council will come around, take pictures.[638.79][638.79](Applause)
All right. I can just look right here on the count of three. One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. And then one more. One, two, three. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for that recognition. And we'll move on with the agenda as it is printed. We'll move on now to item number five, approval of the agenda. I will open the floor for a motion to adoption of the regular meeting agenda for October 16th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved and second moved by Councilman Estes, and second by Councilmember Davis to adopt the regular meeting agenda for tonight, which is October 16th, 2023. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this agenda item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The adoption of the regular meeting for October 16th, 2023 is adopted. We'll move on then to the approvals of, approval of minutes. Open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes of September 28th, 2023, the committee meetings and executive session, legislative work session, executive session, and minutes of October 2nd, 2023, which are the regular meetings. Open the floor for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved and second to approve item 23-402. Do we have any concerns, questions, comments from council, any corrections or deletions to the minutes? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving item 23-402, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item A is unanimously approved under the approval of minutes. Now we'll move on to item number seven, the consent agenda. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved by the council for Councilmember Estes, and second by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Miller, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have any corrections, concerns, comments from council members as relates to the consent agenda? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-334 is unanimously approved. Now we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is item number eight, Economic Development Committee chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on then to the next committee, Finance Committee. I'll ask Mayor Pro Tem if you don't mind taking that one as well.
Yes, Madam Mayor. There's no business under the Finance Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Now we'll move on to Housing and Community Affairs. I'll ask the Vice Chair, Councilman Davis, I know you're not the Vice Chair, but the Vice Chair isn't here. Would you mind taking that committee for me, please?
Yes, ma'am. No business at this time, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Now we'll move on to Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, and that is your committee, Councilman Davis. Would you mind taking that, please?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, no business.
Thank you, sir. Mm-hmm. Personal Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight, Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. We do have business under item 13, which is Planning and Development Committee. The Chair and Vice Chair are not here, so Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, you mind taking that for me, please?
I will be happy to do that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
We, tonight, under Planning and Development, we have several items, starting with, consider a request for a special land use permit for religious institution or place of worship for property zoned R2, single-family residential detached district, being plus minus 4.2 acres on Malone Street in Land Lot 739, District 1, Section 3, parcel ID 07390130017. The application is by HRC. Mr. Samuel Kenimer and Marissa Jackson will handle that for us.
Okay.
Hello, Marissa Jackson, 6701 Church Street, Planning and Zoning Administrator. There are no updates to this item since last meeting.
Okay. Is there anything new that the applicant wishes to bring at this time as well? Okay. All right. The council have any questions before we bring this up? All right. Well, then I would like to place item number 23-306 in the form of motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved and second moved by Mayor Pro Tem, and second by Councilmember Davis to approve item 23-306. Mayor Pro Tem has already asked for questions. We didn't have any. So all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-306 is unanimously approved.
Our next item is to consider a request for a variance from Section 9.01E of the United Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the 50-foot undisturbed buffer by 12.5 feet for a remaining requirement of 37.5 feet, and to reduce the 75-foot impervious buffer by 18.75 feet for a remaining requirement of 56.25 feet of a lot of approximately 4.2 acres, 2.8 acres on Malone Street in Land Lot 739, District 1, Section 3, parcel ID number 07390130017. Application again by HRC, courtesy of Mr. Samuel Kenimer. Ms. Jackson, any new information regarding this?
No. Again, there are no updates to this item.
Okay. Any new information from the applicant? Any additional questions or comments from the council at this time? Hearing none, then I would like to place item 23-348 in the form of motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved and second to approve item 23-348. We did not have any additions or any kind of concerns from the applicant nor council when Mayor Pro Tem asked. So all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-348 is unanimously approved.
Our next item is consider a proposed ordinance to amend subsections 2.02, 2.05, 2.06, 8.04, and 13.02 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow the use of shipping containers for commercial activities in certain zoning districts. Ms. Shayla Reed will provide information.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Shayla Reed, Community Development Director. There are no updates to this item. All items remain the same, and your planning commission recommended approval as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you.
I will say this is, this is an exciting moment, that we can expand the development potentials, potential within the city with this new type of construction that we're seeing in a lot of places around the country. So any other questions or comments from anyone else on the council?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I was trying to see if we had what you included in this section.
Yeah, I believe it was the request to make it more, make it available to general retail development.
It has retail stores miscellaneous, so that is inclusive of general. Okay. Yes, sir.
That covers that. So, at this time, then, I would like to place item 23-345 in the form of motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I had dueling seconds. I think Councilman Estes did, okay. It's been approved by Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller, and second by Councilmember Estes to approve item 23-345. Do we have any additional comments, concerns, or questions as relates to this item from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-345 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Our next item is consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of subdividing approximately 12.041 acres on Chapel Hill Road and Land Lots 56 and 57, District 1, Section 5, parcel number 00560150137 into an approximately 2.0 acre tract and a approximately 10.041 acre tract, applicant by Land Pro Surveying, courtesy of Stan Hettis. Mr. James Gordon, any additional information at this time?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm James Gordon of 6701 Church Street, Engineering Department, and at this time, we have no further information from what we discussed on Thursday.
Is the applicant here? Do they have any other additional?
Uh, no, they're not here at this time.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council at this time? Hearing none. Then I would like to place item 23-406 in the form of motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Acting Chair, I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Who got it, Ms. Acker?
Let's take a pic. You can have it, Mr. Estes.
Is it Mr. Estes? Okay. It's been properly moved and second to approve item 23-406. Do we have any additional comments, concerns, questions from council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-406 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Gordon.
The last item we have under Planning and Development is to consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of combining approximately 1.593 acres at Odessa Street and Land Lot 20, District 1, Section 5, parcels 002, 001, 50166, and 002, 001, 50165. Don't forget those. Application by Omega Metals, care of Charles R. Fur. Ms. Jackson, any additional information at this time?
No, sir.
Is the applicant here? They wish to make any other comments or?
Um, I do not see the applicant, sir.
All right. Any questions or comments from council at this time? Hearing none, I would like to place item 23-412 in the form of motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved and second moved by Acting Chair, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller, and second by Councilmember Watts to approve item 23-412. Do we have any comments, concerns, or questions? All right. Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-412 is unanimously approved.
And that is the long and short of it that we have on the Planning and Development tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, staff. We appreciate your support. We'll move on then to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. A Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The PR Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety, we do have an item, and that is chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, ma'am. I have item one. This item is consider the application for the alcoholic beverage license for the sale and the consumption of on premises wine and malt beverages at the following establishment. Proposed licensing SMG Hospitality LLC, DBA High Noon Eatery, location 8440 Courthouse Square East. Proposed agent outlet manager Michael Hudson Perryman, and required fees have been paid in the Finance Department. And are you Ms. Perryman?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone. Michelle Hudson Perryman, 3605 Long Lake Drive, Douglasville, Georgia, 30135.
Yes, on my absent, I think my colleague, did you hold the public hearing, Council Watts?
Yes, sir. Councilman Davis, we did.
Okay. And Ms. Perry, can you give me a little information since I was out at a conference? What would the hours be of operation?
The hours are Wednesday through Friday from 9 to 4, and Saturday and Sunday, 10 to 4.
And this is the location where the CRU building, this is new, new business, right?
Yes, it is. New business. Yes, it is. More family-friendly.
Okay, so you just want the beer and wine and no alcohol?
Right. That's correct.
Okay. And will that be any hookah?
Not at all.
No hookah?
No.
Hmm. Okay. Well, Madam Mayor, I don't see, and we clear with the, with, everything clear?
Yes, we have no issue.
Okay. Okay, well, Madam Mayor, I make a motion. We approve 23-388.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved and second to approve item 33 dash, oh, 23-388. Our applicant did talk about her experience, and we did not have any concerns on last week as far as it relates to her application for High Noon Eatery. So we haven't heard any other concerns. Do we have any questions in addition to what Councilman Davis has asked? If not, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-388 is unanimously approved. Congratulations.
I forgot to ask you, I'm sorry, Ms. Perryman, for the listening audience, what would the menu?
Um, we have traditional breakfast items, some of them with a spin on it, like banana, French toast. We do serve vegan options like the H&amp;E hash, salmon burgers, just a variety of those.
Oh, good. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, you're welcome.
That's all we have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. She did provide a menu for us last week. We may have one copy for you to see, and she did have vegan options.
She said...
Some, yes, sir.
Had them with pancakes.
I know. So we'll move on then to the next committee, which is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know, we're gonna bring Mr. Bass down now or during other business or make that announcement, or?
It's up to you. It's your committee. You can bring him down.
Um, well, I mean, we could...
We'll wait to other business then.
We're doing, okay. So with that being said, I have no business tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to the next committee, Technology Committee chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to Transportation Committee, and our Transportation Chair is unavailable. So, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, you've been working hard tonight. You're the Vice Chair.
All in the line of duty. Madam Mayor, no business under the Transportation Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll have other business, and, Mr. Bass, I think the Chair of Parks and Recreation and Culture would like for you to come forward and give us a report. This exciting news. Yes, sir.
All right. Chris Bass, 8830 Girly Road, Parks and Recreation Director. I have good news. Although we did not win the gold medal, we did not lose as well. We, we were recognized on Monday as the top four in our population category. Myself and Mayor Robinson accepted that award, which I have in the back, sitting on the table. So we were recognized as a finalist. An interesting fact that was mentioned during the ceremony...
Mr. Cameron, could you get the award so the council can see a little bit closer? Thank you. It's, it's a nice...
That's the top four in the whole country.
Yes, sir, in the, in the country. And an interesting fact, Mayor Robinson and I were talking about during the ceremony is the MC referenced that there are about 10,000 Parks and Recreation agencies across the country.
Ooh.
So to be within the top 20 within the country and top four in our population category says a lot, which is why we were recognized as a finalist. So we are super proud of our team. We are, we'll have a formal recognition for them. We'll have a representative from NRPA come out and come before council, and we'll bring the Parks Recreation team before you. But this is really exciting for us, just being a finalist. And I'll share with you, during our conference, there were a lot of our colleagues there sharing different stories and networking as we always do, and I was sitting at a luncheon and sitting around a table full of Parks professionals, and they were sharing their issues and concerns back in their community, and a lot of it was focused around their elected officials and not getting the support they need. Well, I sat there in silence because I did not have those stories to share. I did not, that is not the reality of Douglasville Parks Recreation. You all have been supportive of us. City management has been supportive of us, and I'm confident that this is not the last time we'll be listed as a finalist, and we will eventually bring home that gold plaque. So thank you for all your support. plaque. So, thank you for all your support.
Madam Mayor, is there going to be any pictures? Because I, I don't like pictures per se. That's the coach of me. Picture day was always a bad day, but this is one picture I won't mind taking when the time comes.
Yes, sir. We, Ms. Allison did have pictures at the event, but I believe when we have a national representative from the, what's the NRPA?
So it's National Recreation and Parks Association Academy for Parks Recreation Administrators will come out and present the plaque to us.
Yeah, so it's going to be at our City Council meeting on the second of November. So we'll, you know, everybody get their hair done and stuff for that day. Get your haircuts in, and we'll have a representative from the National Parks Association present the big gold medallion and talk to us about what it means, and we'll take pictures at that time. But we do have pictures from the event that Mr. Bass and I and some of the representatives from the city of Douglasville. But I was going to try to read the agencies. Bristol Park is in Connecticut, and so that was beautiful. And there was a five-minute video per community. So in thirty thousand to seventy-five thousand population, Bristol Park in community, in Connecticut, Douglasville Hoffman Estates in Illinois, and Oak Park in Illinois. And so they were really, I mean, the parks were beautiful. So for us to be in that number...
The category is from thirty thousand to seventy thousand.
Seventy-five thousand.
That means that we were competing against mostly cities a good bit bigger than us.
Yes, we were the smallest.
That's pretty impressive.
Yes, we were the smallest. So, but yes, so we're going to take pictures on the second.
And the other, the other ones will be up. Ms. Allison or Communications put those pictures up from that evening. It was like the Academy Awards.
Right.
It's like people were dressed. It was really nice.
Yep, yep. So she'll post those pictures that she have. And then we also received some from the NRPA photographer as well, so we'll post all those pictures on social media.
Very good. Congratulations, Mr. Director Bass. Let's give him a hand in this team. Appreciate that. It's the first time in history for parks, hasn't it, been to a place?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, in Douglasville. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. I appreciate you. Be light on your feet.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Under other business, I wanted to formally, in this meeting, recognize our newest member of the one percent club, the doctoral group. But I'll let you do the honors, but I just want to make sure.
No, it's your committee. It's your committee. Go ahead.
Well, I just, I just want to say formally in a meeting, we didn't do this the other night, one of our directors of, became a, got her doctoral degree officially last week. So she's had all weekend to let it slip, sink in and, and, but just, Ms. Austin Bing, Dr. Tab, as, as staff calls her now. And so we have two doctors in that department. That's pretty impressive.
That's very impressive. And as you're saying, it's one percent of people that receive their PhD. So, Ms., Dr. Tab, if you can please stand so we can recognize you. Ms. Tia, congratulations. Very proud of you. And Dr. Westfield, all the doctors around there, we're going to see. Woo! Well, very good. Thank you.
Chief Sparks.
Oh, and Chief Sparks, Dr. Gary Sparks. You're right. Ooh, wee. Very good. Highly educated. Any other business to come before council tonight from the elected officials? I know we have chili cook-off on the twenty-first, and that's going to be phenomenal. And somebody was still asking Councilman Estes if he going to do who dat chili, but I'm, I'll leave that alone because, you know, we, he's going to take a break this year. But, so, the chili cook-off is Saturday. I believe it starts at six or six-thirty. It's always a highly anticipated and well-attended event in the community. So it's nice. It seems like it's going to be nice fall weather, so people should come out and enjoy a family-friendly event that has been in the city. I think it's thirty-four years or so, but it'll be at the Plaza. And Mayor Pro Tem, if you will talk about Guess Who's Coming to Dinner?
That's right. After you enjoy a big heaping bowl of delicious chili, come on over to the For Your Occasions Event Center and see, taking a great play for Guess Who's Coming to Dinner. It's a classic. The original movie with Sidney Poitier and...
Spencer Tracy.
Spencer Tracy and Catherine Hepburn. Fantastic. We don't have any of them. They're unfortunately all long since deceased, but we have some fantastic actors in the role. But at the For Your Events, For Your Occasions Event Center on the next block over from O'Neill Plaza, it'll be on Friday night at seven-thirty, Saturday at three, and seven-thirty, and then Sunday at three. So, come on out.
Very good. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Any other announcements, council? Okay. If not, then we'll move on with the agenda. We have updates from our city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Colonel Dotson, staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan. Thank you. Our police department, Detmarin. Thank you so much. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Political signs. So, just to add, because there were questions about sign removal in the right of way, just to remind you all that the twelve feet, the information that is sent out in the pamphlet relates to the minimum. Does not mean that in every situation that the right of way will be exactly twelve feet. So it is the minimum. So what we are recommending that candidates do is use the utility polls for guidelines, because if it's either in the railroad or the states, right of way, it could very well be different from the local right of way. So utility polls are typically a good guidance. If the utility polls are greater than the twelve feet from the curb, it may very well be that that right of way may be seventeen, maybe eighteen, maybe larger. As it relates to all of the signs that you all see at Douglas County, we're not managing Douglas County's property. The courthouse will manage their own property. They will probably not follow the city of Douglasville's guidelines, but we will not go on the courthouse property pulling or removing signs, and code compliance has been made aware of that. So happy election season.
Twenty-two more days.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. So with that information, it was not very clear. It says twelve feet in our, in our literature that we passed out to the candidates. So we just need to clear it up, I guess, for twenty-twenty-four coming up, that it has to be out of the right of way. It says right of way, but it says twelve feet as well.
The, yes, it's listed with the minimum, but we'll make certain that the language does explicitly state that that is a minimum, and it may not necessarily be exact.
Okay. And again, you were saying, because typically when, during election cycle, when voting starts, you put the signs at the polling places, and we have sixteen. So after early voting, you can put your signs going up to the polling place. So even if it's in the city, for example, Stewart Middle School or Golden United Methodist Church, code enforcement will not pull the signs up?
Anything dealing with government property, we will follow the guidelines with that jurisdiction, i.e. schools or with the, with the county. We will work with them. But again, we will manage accordingly. We're not going to be running out during the week of election, or should say the day of election, pulling signs at the polling place. I think you all would want staff to be doing other things outside of pulling signs on Election Day.
Yeah, and that's tradition. I mean, all over the country, you see signs going up to the voting place where, except for where it prohibits campaigning, which is, gets closer to the facility.
Yes, ma'am. On Election Day, no, ma'am. We will not be participating in pulling signs.
All right. Thank you so much, city manager. You have anything else for us?
No, ma'am. That's all.
We don't have city council meeting again until November second.
You have a fifth Monday. Yes, ma'am.
Praise him. All right, I know. Thank you. Any other comments, city manager? Okay. Now we've come to the portion where comments from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about anything that relates to the city of Douglasville, any business. So we invite you to come forward. Yes, ma'am? And you should have filled out a speaker card, but you're welcome to come forward. Yes, ma'am? Oh, it's no problem. And you have five minutes to talk to us about anything.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Consuela Walker, and I'm a resident here in Douglasville, Georgia, my family and I, since about two thousand and nine when I got married. And I would like to introduce my, our new bakery here in Douglasville, Georgia called Consuela Sweet Treats, right behind Chick-fil-A on Highway five.
Okay.
And we are going to be celebrating our one-year bakery anniversary on October twenty-eighth. So we're so grateful to God for that.
Yes. She said you made it a year, huh?
Yes, we made it a year. And also, we're going to be celebrating Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And we're so grateful to God for my oldest sister. God bless her, hear her of cancer, and also my, one of my first cousins had lung cancer, just had surgery about a month ago, and then a friend of our families just getting over breast cancer as well. So we have two celebrations that day, and we're so excited about it. And once again, it's October twenty-eighth from eleven to five, and that's Consuela Sweet Treats. It is from eleven to five, and we're going to have games and prizes. My nephew's going to DJ, so we're going to celebrate, 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 and we're so grateful to be residents of Douglasville, Georgia. Like they always say, the west side is the best side.
All right, all right, Ms. Walker.
So we love to have you, you, you come on out. Sam Davis and all the other councilmen come on out and help us celebrate.
Yes, ma'am. What is, what's your address? I know where it's located, but...
I'm sorry. I forgot to say. Thirty-two eighteen Highway five, and that's right near Douglasville, Georgia, right behind the Chick-fil-A.
Is it near the salon over there?
Yes, actually, I'm right beside the salon. Yes. And yeah, it's on the, and the yoga is on the left side. Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you so much. I have to fast before I come and get some sweets.
Yes, I have one dessert called, actually, my first dessert is called My Carrot Delights, and it was my first dessert, so. It made with fresh carrots. So, and made with a raw sugar. So I had a lot of people that had, to watch the blood sugar. So I was told that does not spike the blood sugar, so we were so excited about that. So maybe you can try one of those. We have homemade ice cream, assorted delicious cookies. Mr. Sam Davis.
Uh-oh. What's my favorite?
His favorite is my red velvet cake cheesecake.
Oh.
And my Oreo red velvet cookie. So I have all different delicious assorted cookies as well. So you guys come on out, enjoy your sweet tooth with us, and savor the moment.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Ms. Walker.
Thank you.
It's eleven to five, eleven to five.
Well, actually, my hours for opening, I'm open Wednesday through Saturday, and Wednesday through Friday is from eleven to seven, and on Saturdays from eleven to five.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Walker, for bringing that information to us in the community. Do we have any other comments from citizens and delegates? If you'd like to come forward, we'd love to hear from you. Thank you. Well, I don't see anything, anyone else. If we don't have any other business to come before council, this meeting is... It's over.